FYI, I can't hear anything. Before we start.
Yeah, we've been all those down. Lot of base down.
Meeting to order. Welcome everyone in the room. Welcome everyone online. This is the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Today's Wednesday, October ninth. It's right at seven. So we'll go ahead and get started. Please join me for the pledge.
The United States of America, in the Republic, which sustains, from nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one adjustment, teacher nomination, which is E B one. Okay, can you make motion, please? Emma, second. Any questions or comments? Okay, and we will do roll call today because member O'Carry is online.
We'll just do that for each motion or each one. You can go ahead with the.
So we're okay with this one?
Yeah, okay.
So public comments, and just as a reminder, a quick statement, as always. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or her staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit for vanity or shouting and request that speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policy and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review school committee policy A C, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have no action items, but we have several informational items. The first one being the Bangor Garden Committee Presentation.
Yes, the Bangor Garden Committee has been really instrumental in creating vibrant gardens at some of our Bangor schools. I had the opportunity to visit at Abe Lincoln early on and meet with many of them. And they've really been cultivating a love of gardening with our students. So the Bangor Garden Committee is going to be sharing their experiences in our pre-K to three schools, and they would like to discuss potential ways of how we could grow the gardening programs throughout the district.
Thank you. I think we had a PowerPoint presentation. Do you have that right there? Oh, thank you. Over there. Is this the right place?
Yeah, so you come right up there.
I see it on its screen. While he's pulling that up, I'll go ahead and introduce myself and the folks that I have with me today. So, thank you, Dr. Robinson. Thank you to the committee for giving us time on the agenda tonight. We're super excited to be here to talk about supporting all the garden programs that are happening here in the district. Um, my name is Haley James. I am both, well, by day, I'm a public health researcher, but today the hat I'm wearing is a garden volunteer in this program. I have two kiddos in the school district, one at Abraham Lincoln, one at Mary Snow. And I'm joined here by a panel of extreme garden expertise in community organization and community connection. So. Oh, awesome. Thank you. Um, so let me go ahead and interview. So we've got, we're really a group of community volunteers. We're a group of parents. We're a group of educators, of staff here in the district. And I was going to introduce them a little later, but since we went ahead and got started, I want to introduce. So this is Laura Otis. She's a parent volunteer that's been doing a ton of gardening efforts at Fruit Street School and getting their garden program up to speed. And I'll talk about their garden achievements in a little bit. We've got Karen Mary's daughter, who you're going to see a lot of fruits from her labor over the years, working at several schools, including Down East Elementary, Fairmount, and then she's a mentor over at Abraham Lincoln. We have Melissa Gallagher, who's the education director at the Maine Audubon and based here in Bangor. We've got Lauren Noble, who is, I mean, your everything, a community activist, a pollinator steward, an educator, an outdoor educator, has been a tremendous resource and dedicated member. And then we have Lori Patterson, who is the, some of you might know her. The librarian over at Dowdy Middle School has gotten their garden program off the ground there. So we're super excited to be here to talk about supporting Bangor Gardens. As I kind of mentioned, we're this informal group, and we've affectionately named ourselves the Bangor School Garden Network, which is modeled after the name of a fantastic organization based here in Maine called the Maine School Garden Network, who's already been a tremendous resource to all of our programs. And I should mention, we actually represent garden programs from pre-K through high school even. So these are garden programs that are happening across the district and all of our schools, or in a lot of the schools, I should say. So as I mentioned, we're school teachers, outdoor educators, parent and community volunteers. And really what's grown this group together is that we've leaned on each other to support each other in the garden efforts that we're doing now. But we're really looking towards how can we grow this across the district to get every student involved in school garden programs? And I do want to note, we've been needing to support each other and kind of organizing, but by no means are we exclusive or exhaustive of all of the garden things that are happening across the district. Um, oh, one thing I didn't say, I'll go back here. Every picture you see is from a Bangor school garden. So these are pictures that make us very happy, and there's a lot from this harvest season. So we hope you enjoy how full and rich this presentation is of pictures. And I think there's even some of these carrots floating around here. So I know this is a little small, but we want to talk about what school gardens are. Kind of at a high level, school gardens are this integrated, multi-dimensional, immersive learning experience. And that's a lot of big words. What does that mean? We kind of put together what we think school gardens are, are about. They're about hands-on learning. Is this a pointer? I don't know if it'll play it on the screen, but you'll see here on Hands-on Learning, you've got students from Abe Lincoln who were participating in a seed-saving activity and made bean bracelets. And then those are students in the Down East Garden, learning and participating in harvest. And then school gardens are about working collaboratively. I'm sorry, these pictures are so small and I can't kind of guide us through here. But under that working collaboratively label, you see these giant beets that students at Dowdy Middle School are showing off from their harvest. And then they're also showing off the signs that they've created that are in both of Penobscot and English languages. And again, school gardens are about digging in the dirt. We're highlighting here, you've got some high school students laying out and planting in the dirt, the garden beds. And then you've got students over at Fruit Street preparing that land for native pollinator garden and native plants. And thanks to Laura Otis's kind of dedicated work here, they just received the humane designation for a certification for pollinator garden over at Fruit Street. Down here on the far right, Growing a Healthier Future. This part's really cool. So again, we've got some Dowdy students showing the carrots that they've harvested this season. And then I don't know if you can quite see it, but there's a little orange, orange highlight in the middle there and two, two individuals. Those same carrots were served up in their cafeteria by their cook. So kind of a full circle moment there. And then finally, you've got some more orange there. You've got students with just an abundance of tomatoes from their tomato crop, and they're actually weighing that to weigh the impact of what they're doing. And then school gardens are about learning about nutrition. You've got students making these, these fruit critters and then preparing the very vegetables that they've been growing for snacks for them and their classmates. And then finally, gardens are about taking care of each other and the earth. This is the Abraham Lincoln School Garden sign on a community workday. And that program is really modeled around, around the core value that gardens are about. Learning how to be kind to ourselves, being kind to others, and being kind to the earth. So this is what school gardens are about. And then, um, uh, how did that tie into the goals for the district and the state? So as you can see, what we talked about, I mean, these opportunities provide these critical life skills, which ties into, you know, these diverse instructional experiences. They allow space for finding empowering sense of purpose, which is truly about improving mental health for these students. And then the research shows us that they create opportunities for closer connections within the schools, particularly with those teachers, with the trusted adults, and then also with the wider community, their individual communities. So really communicating value, and of course, so much more. Um, I showed this slide because not only is there a rich group of expertise and resources in this group, but we are so lucky to be based in Maine and specifically in Bangor because this is such a rich community of resources. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but these are all organizations that have either already supported the gardens that are happening here in Bangor or have reached out to express their interest in saying, how can we support? How can we partner? So today, we're really starting the conversation to introduce ourselves, to say we exist out there. We're out there supporting gardens. But there's a lot of engagements we could, could further to really grow our garden programming across the district. And so that really wraps us up. We again, just want to thank you for your time. This has been a really wonderful opportunity for us, and we just wanted to leave maybe a moment or two for any questions or comments.
Well, I, I just wanted to thank you for such a beautiful presentation. Thank you all. I, I love the, the knowledge that students can glean from this, but also, you know, the hands. And also there's a growing body of research that shows the outdoors, the connection with outdoors and mental health impact and how wonderful it is for mental health. And so this is amazing. Thank you so much. Any questions? Member Biden?
Thank you truly so much, all of you, for putting this presentation together, for taking the time out. And it really can't be said enough how grateful we are for the continual volunteer hours that you all put in to make this possible for all of our schools. The fact that there are so many volunteers that have come together to make this happen is truly incredible. And I would love to know more about how, well, one, we can help you all as a school committee in terms of growth, opportunity, connection. And in that question, could you share a little bit more about how this is operating at each school? Is it specific to a volunteer that's identified at each school and then they're responsible for running it? Or is there a way that we can ensure there's equity in every single one of the schools?
Yeah, and I'm just the speaker tonight. We collectively put this presentation together and work on this. So I'll say a few comments, but then I definitely want to open it up to my colleagues to speak to that. I know in the immediate term, one of the things that we would love is to actually just have a little bit more time. There's tools that exist, time with you all to understand, you know, maybe goals or visions that you all have, that the district has for school gardens, again, through pre-K to 12th grade. And so there's tools that exist that some of these organizations have that help facilitate, you know, making goals and coming up with a vision. I know, Katie, as you said, a lot of this is just volunteer-based, right? Even the teachers and the staff that are involved, they're volunteering their time above and beyond. So right now, I mean, my comment, my observation from being involved is the short amount of time I have since 2022 is, you know, it really depends on volunteers. So if that volunteer moves or, you know, life situation changes, right? You may lose a program because again, it's so centric. And that's why this group has formed, to support each other and make it beyond, you know, relying on just one person, but also talking about system solutions that could help make this more than dependent on just individual volunteers. But I also want to open it up to the group.
I can talk briefly about how we do it at Fruit Street. Or, or my strategy for it at Fruit Street was that Fruit Street in particular has a on-again, off-again relationship with gardening. There have been great efforts in the past, but then that particular person leaves the district, leaves the school, and then it just goes barely for a while. So when I came on board, part of my pitch to Mr. Poren was that I, I wanted to, and I got this idea from my group, to have it be a part of the PTO and have it be, so you're going to have a PTO at the school, you're going to have your president, your treasurer, your secretary. And so now there isn't, I don't know what my official title is, but garden guru, I don't know. But I've promised that I'm going to be there until I have my own little potter on that I train and pass the torch on to. So I also designed the garden to be, the beauty of native plants is that they need very low maintenance, and they adapt very quickly, and they'll just lose the water that's there. So part of the strategy, having low maintenance going forward. But I also wanted to make sure that before even started, there was some measure of sustainability built in and having it be a part of the PTO, an official recognized part of the agenda every month, has been really great and I think very promising. And I, I personally will be in the school for a while, having three sons, and my youngest is only three. So you're stuck with me, Mr. Poren. But I also promised that I wouldn't back away until I had somebody in place to take over.
So can I ask what, what the takeover looks like if someone, not to take over, but if someone were to, to volunteer? Who do they reach out to? Is it the PTO or?
Yes, so I regularly, I try to grab whoever I can. So there, I've done volunteers from people just seeing me in front of the garden weeding before and after school. They're like, oh, I'm waiting for my kid. Can I help? And then we'll just exchange names. I actually have a pretty good list of some solid families that have come and volunteered regularly. Through the PTO, I have formed my own committee, my own garden committee that I check in with regularly, and they help me reach out and get volunteers. But going through the PTO has been a great source of like, they're always asking for volunteers for festivals and things. And this is just one more thing that they can volunteer for. Excellent. Thank you. I think member Biden has something.
Yeah, just a follow-up to that. Sorry, Ben. Thank you, Laura. I, I think that that is a really strategic and smart way to do it. But just to, I know all of you have experiences, and I know that there is inequities in PTO involvement and that level of engagement. So without a PTO, without an active PTO, or without that level of excitement, or even the number of humans to go around for all of the committees that exist, can someone speak to how we could support a group or help funnel that energy if there wasn't an active PTO?
Yeah, I think this is something that's podium.
Thank you. Thanks, Laura.
My name is Jay Freeman. I need Jay Freeman, the project transition specialist and teacher here at the high school. And so I, with Donna Martin, who's an ITech, we coordinate the garden at Fairmount School. That's after-school Century 21, Grant Focus. But here is curriculum, math, science, English, social studies. We have a garden going, and we're going to make a courtyard garden as soon as the construction is done, any day now, in the back of the school because our window, our classroom looks out on it. But we actually, one of the things that you could do to support us is just come out and dig in the dirt. I know we have a promise from our assistant superintendent, but as soon as we get our delivery of wood, we raise beds. And now she's really on the bucket. And dig in the dirt, and it would be very awesome for people to come out. At Fairmount, we meet on Mondays from three till about four ten. And actually, on the 21st, we're going to be cooking up some of the things that we harvested. And it's really about harvesting food, not just because we like to garden, but for the needy and donations of foods, whether it's a food pantry or a shelter, it's about food security.
Thank you. And to confirm, that's through Project Century 21. Is that what you said?
Yeah, so that's the after-school program.
For Century, excuse me. I knew those words would come to this.
And then I'm just, we decided to do, started being here at the high school because Dr. Butler is a big fan of it. And she's been very, very supportive in some funds and things like that that we need. And so it's been great, and the kids can't wait to get out and dig in the dirt.
Members, right?
Thank you. Just to echo Member Biden's words of thanks and gratitude. Food is a tremendous touchstone for education because it unites us all, but there's also lessons of ecology, economics. When you think of how corporate and distant our food system is, teaching kids where food comes from, it's a wonderful act, almost a revolutionary act in some ways, and I mean that in a positive way. So thank you. I don't know if there's an easy answer to this, but how does a student find their way to these programs? Does it vary by schools? It sounds like it might be an after-school club in certain regards. Just curious about that.
Well, yeah, I think I can speak, but I'm going to, I'm going to look to them to see if they nod their heads while I talk. Um, so typically, an after-school program, I can speak to Abe Lincoln as an after-school program. And again, we are, we, this is our second cohort of students. We started with second graders so they could plant in the, in the spring and then come back as third graders and harvest. So they kind of had that whole cycle. So we, we chose one grade, right, and worked with them. And so it's open to all students. I'm looking at Michelle. We don't turn anyone down. So we basically open it to the entire grade and then figure out how to make it work. And we've had a huge interest. Where actually, that's kind of one of my learning goals right now, is learning how to work with such a big group because we wanted them all to experience harvest and not to break that up. So I think it's been typically an after-school group. Is that right, Lori, for yours? In any grade at Dowdy?
Yes, any grade at Dowdy.
And then after-school group? At, at 10. And then at, I guess, Down East, it was an after-school group open to certain grades?
Second graders in the spring and third graders in the fall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, the teachers, there's a few teachers kind of in the grade. Oh, yeah, definitely. There's teachers. So there's definitely teachers there helping with the programs. I definitely know Abe Lincoln at that as well.
And then when I was putting in the, when I was putting in the pollinator garden at Fruit Street, I had this unique opportunity to get all of the kindergartners. I think there's, I missed one student because he was dead, but I promised to send him home with some seeds or something. But I managed to plant about sixty of the plants with all of the kindergartners over at Fruit Street. It was just a quick twenty-minute session. They pre-dug the holes, but in those twenty minutes, the kids just, they bonded. And over the next few weeks, the kids would, would come to, up to me. And I couldn't possibly remember all of their names, but they'd come up to me and like, can I give you a hug? And they'd bring little nuts, and they'd drag their grandparents over to show them the plant that they put in. So even just twenty minutes, one week during the springtime was a huge impact on these little kids.
Great. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks. Yeah, first, I want to thank you so much for the presentation and for all your work. And I do want to amplify Marwa's comments about the importance of gardening on mental health and really being a lifelong learning experience for students, that many of them will carry those gardening skills into their adult life too. So that's wonderful. And I, and I want to amplify Ben's comment about, learning about where food comes from is so important. And there is such a disconnect. The one question I have, and I completely understand if the question, if the answer is, we don't know. So maybe I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if other large school districts in Maine who have invested in gardening, I wonder if they have some type of paid salary position. It could be a stipend in position, similar to an advisor or a coach, some within the extracurricular budget. So it looks like someone has an answer. I'd just be curious if that exists, what that position is.
So down in Mill Peninsula, at, I think it's Booksville Community School, they have paid, first, it started out as a little peer. Then she was in ITech for a couple of years, you know, she got a couple hours a week, and now she's school time. And every single classroom works either in their greenhouse or under the gardens, and so she is paid. Works either in their greenhouse or under the gardens. And so she is paid for that, but it took quite a few years to get that going and a lot of talks with the school boards and other people. But throughout Maine, there are places all over the state of Maine in schools. I kind of got my own start with gardening after listening to a talk more than twenty, twenty-five years ago from Belfast because they did a star garden and I was like, we can do this anywhere, you know. It's really people wanting to do this, like the people here, the teachers. But more importantly, you know, and people don't always like to say this, there definitely is a financial component. It's not huge really, when you think of how expensive so many things in education are. You know, like if you're going to build a raised bed, it's the wood and the soil to get it going. Seeds are just nothing and people donate seeds all the time. So and but throughout the state of Maine, if you want, I can certainly gather a list together for all of you. But it's great to go out. I mean, just in where I live in Ellsworth, Ellsworth Elementary School has a school garden there. Dedham, I think, does, Trade Community School, MDI. And I can always speak for that area since I live closer to that area, but almost every school in that area has a school garden and some have had it for more than twenty years and they're still going strong. They do a lot of family workdays. They do like a birthday where families come out. And, you know, and obviously not every family can come out on a weekend or come out on a holiday. So they try to schedule things at various times during the year. And I know Barbara Stewart, who's a science teacher here, we've been talking a lot about how can we get families to come out and do workdays? And even if it's a half hour that they can give, fifteen minutes, any amount of time is good. So now we work closely with her too. So that sort of means.
We've got one more, I think.
Oh, just briefly. So very quickly, I had an opportunity to go to Maine Farm to See and School Institute this summer. They just asked for, they had an opening. And it's just a perfect example of these organizations who are out there like Food Corps and Maine Farm to See and School and Seed School who are there and ready to support a school department onboarding. They've got it all. They basically, they have
Excuse me?
What schools do they run in?
Oh, they're, we, I'm going to totally draw a blank, say who was there. They were in southern Maine and I don't want to misspeak. Westbrook was there. They have a large program. There were, I should have prepped that. I apologize. There were four school departments onboarding. But essentially, they're there with your school department as you're going through that process of planning out how it's going to look, school department-wide, and your cafeteria folks are there if possible. There's a list of partners or people who need to participate that day or that week, those three days. And they have everything ready for you and it takes you through your goal setting. So they're setting goals, they're helping you kind of formulate your plan and develop a list of how your year is going to go. So that whole community partner slide, just one last thing, those are the folks and more, like Haley was saying, who are here for us and able to pitch in and support us as we plan with your permission and vision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Your member John Drew has a nice So clearly, food is all very important to this entire committee. And I just wanted to say that these are great programs. And we had one, I think, at Lion Street School for a while, and then we ended up with the Black Thumb, PTO person who can't garden without, you know, kind of haphazardly, right? So that program over there has kind of dwindled and we want to get it back up and running. But I think that from our perspective, I think opportunity for some like cross-district PTO collaborations. So I think we've talked in the past about how we get PTO leaders from the various schools to come together so that we could share best practices from one group to another. So if you have, you know, the lead at your PTO, right, and you're the garden guru over there, how do we identify someone at each school or each PTO so that they can mentor each other? And then ensure that those PTO programs are kind of collaborating and can fill in for gaps if there is a gap here, right? Because I think if it does take just some time here or there. So I think it's a great opportunity. And we've talked a lot about like how we get the schools more integrated with each other and how we learn more about cross-district things. So this might be a fabulous opportunity to kind of start that and make that happen.
Excellent. Yeah.
I'll add one more, just to go back to Tim's question. So one of the resources to, when we talk about facilitating our vision and our goals, typically, the pathway to success means funded roles, right? And I think the PTO is essential and you kind of embed it into the culture and the parents and the community. But when you look at these districts, again, I'm also blanking. It's because we do this RSD number thing and how do you ever remember the numbers of these districts? But of, you know, these organizations like Food Corps where they send in and they sponsor someone to come work in your district or schools for two years, but then the district decides to keep that position and hires on. And then that way, the one I'm thinking about is outside of unity and now they have a special. So just like PE and music, everyone has this kind of agriculture in the classroom special at the schools that this person serves at. So I do, I do think that, Tim, you brought up an important point that from what we're learning in our research, that funded position seems to be one of the critical pieces. Yeah. Go ahead, Number Serat.
Yep. Well, thank you. And then that was, that was really helpful. And what I'm sort of getting at here is, and I be interested in your thoughts on it, is do you see value or would you see value in some person who is sort of coordinating these efforts system-wide?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to put in, like, a two-step rally for supporting the teachers as well. Like, if you had a funded position like that, one of these huge benefits is that like not only could they network and connect with all the families who are interested in volunteering with these gardens, but also the thought is just that teachers are, you know, working in their different departments, trying to teach multiple subjects to many, many students who have multiple learning abilities and interests and things like that. But one of the very interesting things that happens in the garden is you have this integrated opportunity, right? But to get a teacher who's like been solely focused on mathematics in the classroom to get, you know, to take those steps and like move them outside and doing mathematics, like there's a, there's a whole journey that happens and it's not just through the hallways. And so like, like having the support for the teachers like that, I think, is a critical component so that they feel confident in moving smoothly and easily.
Thank you. Member Bryden.
Thank you. And I do fully agree with everything that you're saying. And I think that we all obviously recognize the many facets that gardening can offer to us, which is why I implore our committee to actually think a little bit more critically beyond just volunteers and looking at school volunteers. I, the problem is equity. The problem is which schools have parents that can show up in these places? And if we consistently use this model that we already talk constantly about not working, we're just going to add another thing to that bucket. So I would love for this committee to come back and revisit ways that we can talk about these options. We can look at that list of resources that already exist in our communities so that it's not just an after-school club that's run by a teacher that's having to switch hats or a parent who happens to have that time available. But we're thinking critically about what does this look like for food services? What does this look like for our science programs? What does this look like from a mental health perspective? The opportunities are boundless. And so I'm thankful for this work that's being done. And I'm really hopeful that we as a committee can come back and think a little bit more critically about ways that we can get more involved in supporting this long-term.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all so, so much. We appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are moving on. And yes, please feel free to.
And the carrots are from the down.
They're so good.
I hate carrots. They're lovely. Thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we will move on to PBIS update. Dr. Robbington. So at this time, we will have Principals Shannon Shaw and Sarah Vickers come up to give the committee an update on our PBIS program.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing Principal Vickers and I this opportunity to give you an update. And I've been hearing a lot about PBIS, so this is a chance to show you what we've been working on since the last time we presented. Looks good from my perspective. Thank you. So the first question is, what is PBIS? I think it gets confused sometimes with being a program that we're implementing and it isn't. It's a framework where we collect best practices in a tiered format to support all students and their needs. It's a collection of interventions, it's a collection of strategies and different supports. And we focus heavily in the last two years in Bangor on implementing Tier One. So what do we provide for all students? And why are we doing that? That's a great question. We've talked a lot about best disciplinary practices and traditionally, we've been very reactive, I think in schools in general, over a long time. Punishment-based strategies, you know, solely focusing on referends and privileges loss and referrals and suspensions. And we know we need to change those practices and think about things a little bit more differently. So PBIS focuses on those proactive pieces. The education, teaching and modeling appropriate behaviors is crucial and it really is what Tier One is all about. There's a lot of explicit teaching, there's a lot of modeling, there's a lot of practicing, there's a lot of reminding and supporting. And the other piece to that that can't be overstated is the positive reinforcements that come along with that or acknowledging students when they are making improvements in those areas, when they have shown us expected behaviors in our schools. And this really fosters a really positive environment in the school for all. The purpose is we want a positive climate. We want schools to be a place where students feel like, you know, I belong here, I know what's expected of me, I feel safe here because my peers are safe and, you know, we're coming together. It shifts us from being that reactive to this behavior to being very proactively and teaching positive behaviors. The benefits are many. It reduces incidences of misbehaviors in unsafe situations, improves academic outcomes because students learn how to be learners. Teachers learn how to support students in the ways that they need to be supportive. It improves their social interactions, which lends to belonging because they have connections with their peers, their peers accept them, they learn how to work collaboratively, really enhancing overall well-being for students. And what is required is a commitment from the full staff in a school. This can't be like some of us are going to do this and some of us are going to continue with those old practices. It has to be a commitment from everyone. And I would say in a district too, right? Like the district commits to, this is the, the direction in which we are headed. It requires for sustainability, ongoing training, support, a lot of analyzing, data collection, things like that, because we're not going to continue to do things that are ineffective. So that is a very key piece, that flexibility. This isn't working for our students based on the data we're collecting. So how do we shift and make those kinds of changes? Because it is all about the students and are they successful? And that's the measure that we use. So the overall impact, and we're definitely seeing this in our schools, is cultivating a positive atmosphere and climate in the schools and it is benefiting all students and the entire school community. A lot of celebrations happening in schools around collective earning of rewards for positive behaviors and individual acknowledgement as well. I'm going to turn it over to Principal Vickers.
Thank you again for having us. So we have done a lot of work over the past two years. We are in year three of our cohort with training with Maine PBIS and the Maine Department of Education. And so this year, a huge focus for us is sustainability. We won't have the trainings that we attend throughout the year after this year. And so really looking at what we've put into place and making sure we can sustain moving forward. As Principal Shaw said, this is not just a program that we're going to do and then put to the side. It's something that we're looking to build and move forward. So I'm going to kind of talk through the work that we've done over the past two years. We have conducted surveys using our tiered fidelity inventory. So twice a year, we measure how valid and how much we're implementing with fidelity and always look to build that. When we take that inventory, it gives us clear guidelines as to what our next action steps are to go to build up our inventories or to improve our scores. Twice a year, parents, teachers and students are asked for input using our school climate surveys and we take that information and again, change practices that need to be changed, improve on what we've learned and make adjustments as needed. The district uses Swiss to identify student behaviors and behavior trends. And then there we look for areas that we need to strengthen instruction or areas of improvement that staff need to use to work with students where they're coming in and what their levels are. We're always refining and expanding on what we've done. And so the, what's wonderful about PBIS is it's flexible and if something is not working, buildings have the flexibility to adjust as needed. Every school has developed school matrices and expectations and we've sought feedback through parents, staff, students, and adjusted as needed. We are developing a district team that is looking at building consistency across the district. And they are meeting frequently to make sure that consistency happens, but all going for schools to continue to have their individuality. We are putting a lot of work into professional development for staff and providing opportunities for trainings. Schools use, are creative, knowing that there's never enough time, but taking five minutes of a staff meeting or grade level times or other professional meeting times to provide training to staff on best practices, good strategies and looking at the data and how we can improve. And then Principal Shaw had mentioned as well, we're doing a lot of celebrating of all the wonderful things that are happening in buildings for students and for staff. We wanted to include some examples of what is up in our buildings and posted. So this is just an example of one of our behavior matrices that have been made and is a guide to build that consistency for students and for staff of what's expected in the building. We wanted to really highlight that part of this is student acknowledgement and we are acknowledging students for demonstrating expected behaviors and making improvements throughout their days on their behavior. And every school is really creative in how they're doing that. So we wanted to make sure that that was highlighted and that we have days that we're celebrating great attendance or improved behaviors. A couple things that schools are using, lots of RAM awards are being given out. The pre-K to five elementary schools were all awarded book vending machine through a grant last year and we're utilizing PBIS to acknowledge students, but also boost literacy with the book vending machine. Visits to the office for trinkets and toys. Mary Snow highlighted that they do table for two at lunchtime, which is an option for students. So not just the item that you get to take home, but some experiential acknowledgement as well. So our coaches and smaller PBIS teams are attending workshops through PBIS and then bringing that information back to build that sustainability. We have utilized Teacher Academy and some of our March in Service days to provide some professional development for staff. It's been over, we've had overwhelming feedback that those have been the days that have been most helpful for staff to either work together as a building or work together as a district to be able to collaborate and plan. to be able to collaborate and plan and support each other with this framework. Every building has a coach and those coaches are supporting staff through pushing into classrooms and providing feedback, holding training sessions for teachers, peer observations, and trying to build that culture of giving feedback and improving best practices. I think the schools do a really great job of including the community. And we all hold different events throughout the year, whether it be peak nights or festivals. And many schools are building in PBIS right into those evenings to make sure that we keep that community component and that the community is involved, that this is important to us and it's important to students and we want it supported. And we're always going back and monitoring and evaluating. As I mentioned before, we are built, we have developed a district team. And one of our goals is that we're going to develop a three to five year plan starting this year, knowing that we won't have the support of the DOE and main PBIS. And so how do we sustain long-term in the district? And what do we need to do to make sure we're consistent across the district? So what I would say is stay tuned to that. It's really comprehensive and includes policy review and budget pieces and stakeholder engagement. So it's a big process and we're kind of in those beginning stages, but knowing that we want this to continue on. So when thinking about how, there are always lots of questions around data. And where does the data come from and what are we doing with that data? So I wanted to provide you with some data from Down East because that's what I can speak most clearly to. We are a school of eighty-six percent free and reduced lunch. When I started in 2021, you can see there's this huge increase in office referrals. This was also a year that we added two additional special education classrooms. So that year, our data was fairly skewed. We had all of our special education classrooms using Swiss as well. And so it kind of skewed our data and who was requiring support and what practices were in place. The following year, we started in the PBIS cohort and you can see those numbers dropped drastically. But what we also did is we learned how to collect data for students that were requiring a higher level of support. They all still get Tier One interventions, but it's a better reflect reflection of how we're collecting data. What I will say is that we then took that data and I will just ask you to take two and pass it around. We have developed an office referral flow chart to kind of indicate what is managed in the classroom and what needs to be managed by the office. But then we also worked on our office referral form and providing staff with definition for behavior, but also what are ways that you can respond to behavior? We take all that data, assess what's happening in the building and then make adjustments through there. And so there's lots of talks about how we're looking at data and how we're supporting students. So that's where we're getting some of our office, that's where we're getting a lot of our data sources from. And what I will say is that this was our fidelity inventory at the end of last year with our Swiss data. And that triangle is exactly what it's supposed to look like. So more than eighty percent of students are getting what they need with those Tier One interventions. And then it's the, you know, fifteen percent at the top that are requiring Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. So what I would say is PBIS is working. We are fortunate enough that some of our schools have been accepted into the advanced tiers group, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. So we're really looking at now, how do we really support students that are requiring additional support? When I was thinking about also, how do we present data to you and to the community? We talked a lot about bringing down office referrals and suspension information. But also there's lots of really great things that are happening. Down East has really started with student attendance and we've put a lot of work into building that back up. And PBIS has been a part of that. So you can see the trend that we are increasing. And just a comparison from last September to now, we're up two percentage points. So we're doing a ton of work and PBIS is a part of that. So as I said, we've had a couple of schools that have been accepted into the advanced tiers cohort. That is a two-year commitment. Our hope is that we get that training and then again, building on that sustainability, bring it back to the district. And how do we support district-wide with those Tier Two and Tier Three interventions and supports? So to kind of wrap us up, it is, PBIS is more than just discipline and student behavior. It's about developing a positive school-wide culture and a sense of belonging. We focus on root causes and taking, it's all data-driven and talking about what is the function of the behavior? And it's not a manualized program. Our goal is that we measure student behavior, collect data and make sure that we are supporting students all the way through. Any questions?
Thank you both so much. That was very helpful. I remember when we started, there was a lot of fear, right? There's a lot of fear about this and I heard it in the community, kind of exactly what you alluded to, right? It's a disciplinary program and, but we fear what we don't know. So this was very helpful and I loved how you broke it down. And I have just a couple of questions unless anyone else wants to go first now. So you talked a little bit about the positive impact and that was really helpful. What are the areas of weaknesses, maybe, not to put you on the spot, but other than sustainability? And I think that's a big one, right? It's paramount and consistency across the district. But what other weaknesses do you think are areas of improvement that you would like to see us get to as a district?
I have a couple of ideas. If you want me to jump in. Certainly, Principal Vickers talked about advanced tiers, that is crucial. It's not just the Tier One, we have to get to supporting all students in the ways that they need. So continued work on that and we're starting in that direction. So support for that and whatever that uncovers as we roll out those supports for students. The other thing is funding. We provide a lot of experiences for students, you know, to encourage this kind of behavior. We provide a lot of rewards and celebrations. And so in order to be sustainable, you know, there has to be some kind of budget line there for each school in order to support students. So I would say those are two areas. And I would say the other one, staff is always looking for more time, professional development time. And so finding time to do that and honoring that request. If teachers are asking for it, then I think we've got to honor that for them.
And something, just one, I guess not a question, but a comment that I always remind the community members of is that this was highly recommended by our mental health advisory committee. And it's really helpful that they felt, and it consists of guidance counselors or school counselors and social workers and psychologists and so forth. But they highly recommend this, recommended this program as something that helps with mental health and supporting the mental health of our students. So I think this is important to note as well. So yeah, great work. Member Brighton and member Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you both for this presentation. I really appreciate and I love all of this data and the way in which you're tracking has been so helpful. Because to Chair Hassan's point, it is confusing, for lack of a better word, when, you know, you're, I know that all of our students care deeply about their RAM awards or depending on what school they go to, what it's called. But understanding how that looks in every school and how we are maybe truly addressing all of the needs of our students with PBIS is something that I am asked about constantly. So I appreciate that you've brought up the Tier Two and Tier Three schools that have been accepted into the program. I think the language that you used, can you explain that a little bit more about what that acceptance looks like? And how we might be, what that means for, for parents who are maybe thinking, my kid's not motivated by PBIS? What, how is this working for them? Will that address it?
There is a little bit of criteria through the DOE. I mean, PBIS, you had to score at least an eighty percent on your fidelity inventory. And there is some wiggle room around that. Principal Shaw and I felt confident that our schools were ready. And I talked to some of the trainers that we were working with, that we were ready to do that. Our hope with the district team is that we can help bring all schools there. And so I would say lots of schools are really, really close. So help bringing that, like, one of our plans is to come together with our inventories. What artifacts have we created and how do we share that wealth and not recreate, recreate the wheel throughout the district? A perfect example of that is a staff handbook. So making sure that there's one that exists for everybody and how we're going to implement training for that. So it was a really easy application. It was pretty much that criteria and then making sure you have the district's support to implement.
I would just add to that, if you jump into your higher tiers too early, you don't have a foundation of this is what we do for all students, the whole system is going to crumble. So there's that criteria of, you know, we have to have these things in place for all children. If we're not doing these things for all children, we're not meeting everyone's needs. Then we look at more intensive supports.
Thank you very much, both of you. Thank you.
Member Sarah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for this report. I enjoyed it. I'm a long, longtime fan of PBIS and I was very excited when we adopted it here. I want to ask about recognition of making improvements because I think this is a really important piece. And I think there's some misperceptions sometimes in the community about this piece. And I want to use attendance just as a sort of an example. And then I'd like to hear about ways in which we're reinforcing improvements and not just simply meeting a certain target or a certain expectation. So, so for example, I know, well, I know at my own children's school, they're receiving an award each month if they get ninety-five percent attendance. They receive a nice little, yeah, recognition of doing that. So if you're a student, let's say you're a student, your family that struggles with, with getting to school and during September, you didn't reach that ninety-five percent, maybe you, maybe you got sixty percent. And then, but during October, you did an amazing job and you, you got all the way up to eighty-five percent or ninety percent. Would they, how can, how are we going to recognize that kid for that improvement? Even though they didn't hit that ninety-five percent target, how are we going to recognize them for that improvement? And also similarly with, with behaviors and things as well and sort of recognizing that improvement? Thank you.
I can't speak directly to that recommendation system. However, we have these book vending machines, you know? And so if students' RAM awards are chosen, they get those. But we also use that as an incentive for some of our students' behavior plans that, you know, there's accessibility for all students to these rewards. And it's based on what is their best, right? What, what is a reasonable expectation, you know, for, for these students? And they're showing effort, they're showing improvement. We're going to celebrate that because we want them to keep trying. We want them to come back every day. So while we have these sort of school-wide systems, there are lots of smaller systems happening to make sure that all of these other students are being supported.
Thanks for saying that.
I think the other piece to say to that is that the program's flexible. And so I will speak to Down East. Last year, we recognized students at the end of every month for perfect attendance. And it was really successful in building it, but we realized towards the end of the school year and kind of making a shift into this year that we wanted to set some more goals for students. And so that everybody can be involved, understanding that at an elementary level, it's sometimes out of our students' control. And so we've shifted to meeting a target at the end of each month and the whole school gets to participate in something. I was, Down East went to Conans on October 2nd because we reached our goal. So those sort of things are happening.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the super until we're up to.
Thank you. So we have several updates. Already heard two wonderful presentations, but a few things I just wanted to highlight from the schools. On October 1st, James F. Dowdy had the start of the guest server lunch program. The city of Bangor, the Public Works Department was there serving lunch. They had their big machines there. I was able to pop by and the kids were having a great time. So that was wonderful. Back, I believe this was back, you know, last year at some point with the wind damage. It was wind damage to the Cohen roof. So that's circling back. We're in communication with, there's some insurance coverage, some FEMA coverage. So that is being addressed and not all within the budget. So there's some support there. We've been looking and talking as an administrative team about working diligently to increase parent communication. And we've been fortunate to have a smore, they're called smore newsletters, which you've seen because we're all sending them out, but in different form and different ways. But really trying to have some consistent, regular communication to support families. And this is a translatable newsletter, so it's really beneficial in that way. Principal Vickers just mentioned it, but I wanted to highlight that Down East School met their ninety-five percent attendance goal for the month of September. So that's wonderful news. And there is currently a grant being worked on to support all grade two students to attend Rogers Farm in the spring. In terms of the district, I've, I met with our Director of Civil Rights, Dana Carver-Bieller, to re, kind of look at restructuring our DEIB committee. Really looking at developing two groups there, a working, a working group that would consist of community and parent experts. And then there would be also an additional team within the district that would work collaboratively with them. And really looking at, I know there's been a lot of work done in the past few years. And now we have a lot of recommendations. The overarching goal this year is going to be, how do we take these initiatives that have previously been identified and move them into an actionable timeline? So we'll be, there'll be more information coming from that. Based on our policy, BBAB, our student representatives to the board, we have formed a committee to select the second student representative so that Sophia has a partner. And that team includes myself, Principal Butler, Director Carver-Bieller and Member O'Carry. So we are going to meet, we have many, many interested students. So we should, we're hopeful that we will have that selection soon. And I'm participating in a professional learning myself called Igniting Passion, Retaining Teachers to Improve Learning Through Innovative and Personalized Professional Development. So I'm excited about this. It's a five-session online cohort and it's nationwide, connections with administrators across the country to really think about how we make sure that the professional learning that we're providing to our staff is meaningful and relevant to the work that they're doing. So, so important. At my Pankow's meeting, they had a liaison from University of Maine to share that the teacher preparation enrollment is up by twenty percent. So that's a wonderful celebration. And the updates on the measure what matters. There is a timeline of the end of this month or possibly November that we should get the information that was gathered by the state in terms of the, you know, the session that we had that evening. And we'll be discussing that at our district team, once we get that, to determine what the next steps will be for here. You know, to take that information and actually make it again into some usable information that's going to help us move forward.
Thank you.
Moving on to report our reassignments. I'd like to report the following reassignments. For Nancy Grant from Special Education Teacher Point Five Project Transition and Point Five Multiple Handicap at the Regional Program at Bangor High School to Special Education Teacher Project Transition at Bangor High School. Tracy Riordan from Special Education Teacher Point Five Self-contained Classroom and Point Five Multi-Handicap Program at Mary Snow to Special Ed Teacher Self-contained Classroom at Mary Snow.
Next, report of resignation.
I have the following resignations to report. Kelly Hesselbrack, Point Two Five IEP Coordinator, Bangor High School. Robert Young, JV Basketball Coach, Bangor High School. Toby Rogerson, Boys Freshman Baseball Coach, Bangor High School.
Next, we have report of retirements.
We have one retirement, Tommy Cormier, Grade Six Teacher at the William S. Collins School.
Thank you. We're moving on to business action items. And the first action item is minutes for the regular meeting of September 25th, 2024. Any motion? Second. And I have a roll call. So Chair Sinin? Yes. Member Brighton?
Yes.
Member Luciana?
Yes.
Member O'Carry?
Yes.
Member John Bro?
Yes.
Member Sprite?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we have personnel, we have nominations of a teacher. I would like to recommend the following teacher for the 2024, 2025 school year with a one-year program.
the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year with a one-year probationary contract. And that is Isaac Bushway. I'm going to ask Principal Ms. Brenner to come up and say a few words. Mr. Bushway is here this evening, so thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, for the opportunity and good evening, Chair Hassan and, and members of, members of the committee. Great pleasure to, to introduce Mr. Isaac Bushway, who's, who's standing behind me. So just a, a few words about Isaac is I think he takes great pride and I think all of us can take great pride in the fact that he's a product of our school department. Isaac attended Fourteenth Street School, Fairmount School. Mr. Maury wanted me to make sure that I stress that he attended the James F. Dowey School. And is graduate of Bangor High School. Following his, his experience here in our schools, he attended Hudson University and earned a degree in elementary education. For us at, at Cohen, he's a familiar face. He, he did his student teaching with us half of that time in the sixth grade, the other part in, in our self-studies department. And, and since then, has been a, has worked in a supportive role in our school. So he's been in, in a lot of classrooms and worked with a lot of children and supported faculty. And beyond that, he's also been a part of our Cohen extracurricular activities for the last few years. So we're, the team and I at, at Cohen School are, are really excited to, to, to welcome Isaac into different, and then now in a new capacity and we feel he's going to do a great job. If I may, Dr. Robinson, I, I just want to thank Mrs. Cormier. Hi. Mrs. Cormier was hired in nineteen eighty-nine and she's only been in two places in the school department, only at Bangor, Mary Snow School and Cohen in recent years. So I had the, the pleasure of working with her. Well, I worked at the Mary Snow School, longtime fourth grade teacher. And certainly it was a pleasure to have her join the Cohen faculty in recent years. But she's just a tremendous person, excellent teacher. And I just want to thank her publicly for all of her years of, of, of work with children over time in the Bangor School Department.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and welcome, Mr. Bushway. So moving on to, oh, well, I need a motion.
Second. A roll call. Okay. Chair Hassanian? Yes. Member Brighton? Yes. Member Luciano? Yes. Member O'Carry? Yes.
Member Jondo? Yes. Member Spray? Yes. Member Sarah? Yes. We will move on to extra duty assignments.
I am recommending approval of the following extra duty assignments for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Jamie Jarvis, Point Five National Honor Society at Bangor High School and Jane Venturelli, Point Five National Honor Society at Bangor High School.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Second. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Chair and Senator? Yes. Member Brighton? Yes. Member Luciano? Yes. Member O'Carry? Yes.
Moving on to donations and they'll be shared by member Sarah.
To Down East School from Realty of Maine, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of one hundred. To Fourteenth Street School from Achias Savings Bank, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of two hundred and fifty. To Abraham Lincoln School from the Bangor Elks Lodge, dictionaries for all grade three students having a total dollar value of one hundred and fifty. To Fairmount School from TriCorp Federal Credit Union Campaign for Ending Hunger, a cash donation for the Backpack Program having a dollar value of one thousand fifty-three. To Down East School from the Bangor Elks Lodge, dictionaries for all grade three students having a total dollar value of three hundred. I move to accept with thanks.
Second. With gratitude. Roll call, please. Chair Hassanian? Yes. Member Brighton? Yes. Member Luciano? Yes. Member O'Carry?
Yes, please.
Member Jondo? Yes. Member Spray? Yes. And member Sarah? Yes. We will move on now to committee updates, but first any comments and or questions from the committee? Member Brighton?
I would like to just make a quick comment. Mr. Ms. Brenner obviously gave a very gracious and generous thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Cormier. And I cannot do the same because I only unfortunately had the pleasure of having her be my child's sixth grade teacher for a short time. But I will say in that short amount of time, my child has had an exceptional experience moving into middle school. And, and I not only have Mrs. Cormier been such a great support to her class. I know that even the siblings of students that have had Mrs. Cormier know her, feel supported. And she knows them by name, even if they haven't even gotten to Cohen yet, which I think just speaks to her real love and attention as a teacher and she will be sorely missed. And Mr. Bushway, I've also heard a lot about you. So I am very excited that you will be joining with all happy thoughts and excitement about you moving into this. But it's nice to hear a familiar name that you hear in your own home about, you know, who your child is interacting with. So we're really, we're really grateful that you will be coming on. Welcome.
Any other comments or questions? No, okay.
Do we have any representatives reports? Maybe UTC? Yes, a quick one. And as you know, we have been working diligently on this equipment bond, which required thirty-nine different towns to sign warrants and have them approved by their council and their sheriffs and their clerks to get on the ballot. And we are excited to share that all thirty-nine towns have accepted that. And the bond will be on Bangor's ballot. So not, I know that Members Sarah and I have shared multiple times how incredibly this will serve the UTC community. It's an equipment bond that has never before come up for the school to be able to really improve the equipment that they have access to. That only goes to better serve the students there and their experiences working with a multitude of really up-to-date, high-quality equipment. So we're thrilled about this being on the ballot. We are hopeful for everyone's support. And if you have any questions or want to learn more, there is a public meeting on October fifteenth at six PM at UTC, which is on Hogan Road. It's a great opportunity to learn more, see UTC in person and see what, how this equipment will better serve our students. So we encourage you all to join if you are able.
Member Sarah, do you want to put in a pitch for the community?
What's that?
He's politically swaying it.
I will add this. There is going to be some great materials, informational materials coming from Director Peterson to us that we're going to share with all of you. And we hope that, that you'll share it within your networks and get the good word out, advocate for this. And it's going to do great things for the, for the UTC community.
Thank you both. And last but not least, to the committee member update from Member Crestville.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start off by saying the seniors took the SAT today. And if they didn't, they were able to tour UMaine EMCC, UMaine Augusta, Bangor and Hudson, which was a wonderful opportunity while all the underclassmen were stuck taking PSATs. This is a really special announcement. As we gear up for Homecoming Week, our Spirit Week themes are being approved as we speak. We're also really excited to announce that students call out to all of our Bangor football fans, young and old, for our football game November first at seven PM. It's our homecoming game and we actually have merch that just dropped for the whole. Not, not only for the student section, but for the whole, the whole stand. We want everyone in white spreading the word. It's at DISApress.com. So go check it out. Yeah, go Rams.
Thank you so much. We move on to informational items. We have several important dates coming up. Wednesday, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, another regular meeting, seven PM here at the library. Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four is our reorganizational meeting, eleven AM in council chambers. Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four is our workshop at five PM here at the library. November, Thursday, November fourteenth, regular meeting, seven PM, so right after our workshop. So it will be a, a pretty long afternoon and evening for us. Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty-twenty-four is another regular meeting, seven PM right here in the library. Final call for questions and or comments from the committee? Seeing none, I actually want to make a motion to move us into executive session for the purpose of discussion on the teacher and educational technician labor contracts pursuant to one MRSA four oh five sixty. Second. Roll call, please. Chair and Senator? Yes. Member Brighton? Yeah. Member Luciano? Yes. Member O'Carry? Yes. Member Jondo? Yes. Member Spray? Yes. Member Sarah? Yes. In adjournment for all others. Thank you. We have a separate link. Did you get that or no?
I didn't, but one was it sent. If it was sent before this meeting, then I didn't get it.